We're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for June the 8th, 2022. Bill after 6 o'clock. We are here in city council chambers at 345 High Street. We do have one public hearing this evening. It involves vote sections involving cigarette and tobacco vendors. Do a roll call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nav.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
First off, an offering of prayer. Councilmember Carla Fear, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
To say that this has been a difficult year so far is a vast understatement. So first, I ask for a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to violence, and that God's grace may sustain the aching souls of their families. Heavenly Father, please turn our hearts towards you. Help us to understand the value of living peacefully and to work in unity with one another. Let our leaders advocate for peace and love instead of chaos. May the words that come from their mouths be words that edify the nation. In Jesus' name, we believe and pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have special presentations this evening. And is Dan Bates out there by chance? Yes, he is. Good. Well, the first one is the Play Ball event. We're going to recognize that event. I think maybe the best way to do, instead of just words right now, is Dana, can you go ahead and play that?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Great job, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Now, if it's all possible with the architect, did the event kind of come on up here? Dan Bates, please say a few words. Introduce yourself, please, if you would.
Mayor, council citizens, thank you for the opportunity. You know, this really wasn't a chamber event. This was really a recognition of a historic moment in Hamilton. And we were just honored to be the lead agency that could take that forward. It was a lot of partnerships that made it happen. I know there were even people from city and city council over there helping ahead of time and with the Spooky Nook crowd. So I just think it was a great documentation of, you know, a benchmark in Hamilton's history and a little view into the future of what we're getting. So we were just very honored and excited to be able to be the lead in taking this forward. Thank you.
A round of applause for... Those of us who were there, I think I want to hear from you first, Eric, since you had probably...
Since I rode the bull three times. Yeah, I got suckered into that. But then I realized one thing. The next day, I felt my age. I shouldn't be doing that. So no, it was great. It was a good event. It was exciting. Never ridden a bull before, but I have now. It's off my bucket list. But I just, Dan, it was just, it was a proud moment in Hamilton, in my opinion. It just, it just to walk in there, I know it's not all done yet, but boy, we can just all imagine what it's going to look like when it's done. It's just, it's exciting. And to have a thousand people, and I think it was a thousand is what we had. So to have a thousand people there and just think what it's going to be like when you have thousands of people there. It's going to be an awesome place. Exciting.
It was. Tim?
When we started the dream and had the opportunity for Sam and a blast from the past, Moses Glick, and people that were influential in the dream of Spooky Nook coming to Hamilton, taking the success that Sam has had in Lancaster, Manheim, Pennsylvania, and growing it exponentially into what was Champion and Smart Paper. Those properties probably would have been vacant or warehouses or something along those lines, rather than becoming the establishment of a destination place in southwest Ohio here in Hamilton that people from 500 miles away will come and enjoy. But the thousand people that were with us that night were all testimony to this journey that we've been on and the celebration of the first event is Dan and I spoke. And it's great to be the first event someplace and to be able to have that, the success that we had that night and the people, the visitors that were there, the people that live here in Hamilton that were there, just had a wonderful, wonderful time. So as Eric said, we know it's not finished. We know it's going to be a while yet with supply chain matters and things like that. But once that entire edifice, the Mill 1, Mill 2 becomes opened up later this year, it'll be a wonderful, wonderful place for people to go on weekends, people to have conventions during the week and meetings during the week and things like that. So restaurants and hospitality places and fun places for all of us that live here and work here and play here. It'll be another star in our list of stars of things that are going on in Hamilton. So Michael?
It's just a testament of a vision becoming a reality, and that reality is finally here. And it's going to be such a major benefit to the community, to the residents, and to the businesses. It's just a shining star that... Just kudos to everybody that made that become a reality. That was over 10 years of work, a lot of hills and mountains to climb, and we're getting there. But it's here, and it's only going to benefit the city. And it's a good testament of council, working together with the chamber, chamber working together with council and everybody, all community groups to pull this thing off. So great things are happening, and more great things are coming.
It was an historic event. I know I used that word quite a few times on that Thursday night. Thanks go to the Sam Bylers, Spooky Nook team, city team, chamber team. Saw so many people there. I think I saw maybe a third or a half of Fairfield City Council there. Folks there from Butler County, administrative offices, House Secretary of State was there. Just a lot of people there who just wanted to see him. And I mean, it is a real special place. You can actually see there what it looked like with, it could easily be a picture of wedding receptions there, conventions being there, business meetings being there. It was just incredible to see. I'm glad that the crane was painted yellow. You can't miss that. That's our history. That's the history in that building. Eric did a really good job, I thought, on the bull. He got up there. And I drove today to B Street Canyon, you know. Call it Canyon of Champions, Canyon, or whatever you want to call it. But it was really a nice ride with the lights, the windows, the streetlights. It's very, very impressive and kudos to everybody who had that event. It was kind of like a sneak peek. And I mean, all of the attorneys saw it on TV because it was covered by the media. They were just seeing how great it was. Reds games and the folks that sit around me, we all had seats together, we're talking about it. So hey, we made a mark, definitely. Carla?
Well, Dan, as you know, I was not able to be there because I had grandchildren graduating from high school in Lakota and Lexington. I heard nothing but good about it, though. So I'll let them, the rest of council, express the evening. I just want to take this chance to thank you guys, the chamber, for everything you've done. The face of the chamber has changed so much, and you reach out to so many people in the city, you and your staff. And so I just want to thank you for doing that and keep it up.
I want to give a shout out to Sam's team and Dan's team. I'm not sure anybody would have had the courage to walk into that building three days before and pull off an event like that and not stop and just say, we're going through with it and do it. I think it's a testament to your courage. I think it's a statement that resembles our city in just hard work and resiliency and the courage to move forward. And I think you guys deserve a shout out for all the work you put in that day. Eric Pullman said he's working on doing the thing hanging from the ceiling for the next time.
I tried to get Lauer on the bull. He just would not do it. I said, look, I'm a lot older than you. Come on, you can do it.
But...
Get that picture out of your mind.
Growing up in that neighborhood and seeing this resurgence in Hamilton, man, it was a very proud moment because I remember standing at that hill when that strike went on in Champion and the union workers lost, and you could see the decline. And to see this thing come to life is amazing for me because I can, I can't tell you how many trips that my friends and I made down to that river, down to Champion Paper. And this is why I decided to run. This is what I wanted to see happen for Hamilton. And this is probably one of the greatest things that I will ever see in Hamilton, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Thank everybody that was involved in that night and involved in making all this happen.
Thanks. It was a great night. I was there with my husband, my daughter, son-in-law, my granddaughter. It was a celebration. My mom worked there 70 years ago, and I wish mom could have seen that night. She never would have believed that I was dancing in the Champion Mill. I rode the bull before the cameras got there, so just saying.
I saw that.
Did you fall off?
No, no. We also spent the night in the hotel. And to wake up in the morning and to see the river, I never thought I'd be sleeping in the Champion Mill and looking out at the river view, but it was spectacular. So it was a great evening, thanks to all who put it together. And I'm just fortunate I got to be a part of it. So thanks to everyone. It was a great night.
Mr. Mish?
Prepare any remarks, but also thank you to Dan and his team. You know, my two takeaways from the event, one is talking to former Champion employees that were there that night. None of them that I ever had formally met before. That was powerful to hear, to almost echo what Councilman Lauer said, the decline of the mill and when it was at its strength versus when it finally closed in its last iteration in 2012. And to make sure it could be preserved in some form or fashion, the physical structure with a nod to the history, I think was incredibly moving for me. But the one thing that I think Dan and his team have done a very good job of, and I think the whole purpose of it is not to have a sports complex on the river, it's to be a catalyst for the community and to our small business community. And that's what Champion Mill really means to me is when there was 3,000 or 4,000 employees at its height working there, those employees powered our small businesses. Our small businesses have struggled for a long time, and to bring a million-plus visitors into Hamilton from outside Hamilton into Hamilton on an annual basis, once they're fully operational, is going to be a huge positive impact for those small businesses. Some of them that, like Richard's Pizza, that have been here for 60-plus years, the ones that maybe just have opened in the last few years, but it's almost like a thank you to them for believing in Hamilton and just giving them that additional support. So, but Carla said it right. I mean, the chamber has reorganized, and I love the energy. Dan is probably one of the hardest-working people I've seen in Hamilton and his team, and I just sincerely appreciate that.
You mentioned the former Champion employees, I think would be an idea for Sam and his team to maybe have a group of Champion employees. And a lot of them are getting up there in years. And I know a couple of guys who fought the Korean War together, worked at Champion together for 40 years, and they would love a tour of that place. So it'd be nice if we could set something up like that. Just some of the sponsors. TeleOhio was the Hall of Fame sponsor. The All-Star sponsors were 9258 Wealth Management, Spooky Nook's Champion Mill, and Journal News was also one of the major sponsors. So any other comments about what was a great night in Hamilton, Ohio?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Real quick, I want, Steve, thank you for that video. You did a great job. So I saw you flying the drone and everything that night, and he works hard to it. That's, Steve thinks, TV Hamilton. I know Jeff was involved in that, too. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you because you folks reach out to thousands and thousands more people. Okay. Next on the special presentations is Engineering Projects Update, as well as Train Depot Relocation Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. Rich Engel, Director of Engineering. I have two special presentations tonight. First is Traffic and Street Resurfacing. Thought it was time to revisit where we're at with street resurfacing. First item is the project that's ongoing, the Central Base Traffic Signal System. Recall, this is a nearly $6 million project that has started last fall. We ran into some material supply issues earlier this year. However, they've got all the material in, and they're working on the 27 priority intersections, and they expect those to be complete and operational by July 31st of this year. Again, this will have smart technology on all 97 traffic signals in the city that will monitor traffic and adjust accordingly within the parameters that we set, and then also generate and generate all the data associated with those signals so that we can take a look at that and adjust as well with the parameters. Concrete Repair and Resurfacing Update. This is the project that was bid last year, and we have completed some streets like Cleveland, Tabor, Thall Drive. The three cul-de-sacs along Cleveland are going to be milled and resurfaced because the product that ended up was not satisfactory to our liking, so we are going to resurface that with regular asphalt. That'll happen probably in the next month or so.
Rich, I'm sorry, can I stop you right there just for one moment?
Yes, sir.
Are they going to be notified, the residents of those three cul-de-sacs, in advance?
Yes, we're going to be hand-delivering letters within the next week.
Thank you, because I'm still getting calls. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Elmont Avenue, between Hunt Avenue and Western, the intermediate paving is complete on that street. The Monument, Herm, and Stevens Streets are also complete. And I will be creating a PDF of this slide presentation and forwarding it to you first thing in the morning. I was not able to do it today. I completed it late, and then we had another meeting this afternoon. These are some other projects we're working on. Corwin Avenue, there's a lot of it that is complete, but we're still working on some of the concrete work and also resurfacing work out there as well. So the contractor still anticipates to be complete with this project by the mid-July. And Hayes Avenue is also part of that project, and the intermediate paving is complete on Hayes Avenue. The next list of streets, Leo Drive, Sanders, Kelly Court, Carroll Court, and Hermay Drive are part of our water main replacement and resurfacing project. Currently, they're working on the sidewalks, drives, and curbs being replaced. And then, once that is done, they'll be moving into the resurfacing portion of that project. And then this is also part of the project that was bid last year. Ray Avenue and Edgewood Avenue, the contractors working on the curb, sidewalk, and drives approach, they are complete now. And then the streets that are in Lindenwald area, Allen Avenue, Neuz, Hayes, Bro, Chase, and Madison are all complete with the work. And then this is the contractor that we also added the South B Street portion on from Columbia Bridge to Main Street. They are completed the stormwater work, and now they're working on the curb, sidewalk, and drives. And then this is the continuation of additional work that that contractor's performing out on the west side, Fairborn, Fairborn Court, Kensington Drive, Heathrow Drive, Heathrow Court, and Sunnybrook Court. All of the intermediate paving is complete on that project, and we'll be waiting for the final surface course to be done in the near future. And lastly, with the resurfacing update, this is the project that was bid earlier this year. Diana Drive, Greer Court, Cameron Place, Alberta Drive, and Victor Court. That work has not started yet. The contractor has been working on E Street, F Street, and Gray Avenue, and they're currently working on catch base replacement on those streets. And then lastly, this is a project that was recently bid. We'll be installing a digital message board on High Street just as you go, I'm sorry, westbound, just before you start over the, down into the underpass, there'll be a large message board that'll be, provide information to the visitors to the Spooky Nook complex, advising them which direction they should go, whether it's easier, less time to go straight ahead on High Street to B Street, or else go north on MLK and go to the parking lots in that direction. So this will be tied into our traffic signal system as well. Any questions on this presentation?
Rich, that digital message board will be a permanent fixture, right?
Yes. It will probably not get as...
So you can use it for like Operation Pumpkin, things like that, that you want to leave messages for?
Yes. It'll be completely digital and programmable.
Okay.
Yep. And that will not, installation will probably not occur until next year, early next year. The delivery time on this message board is quite long.
Rich?
Yes?
Corwin Avenue, have the reports from the neighborhood, the smell and everything is gone, and they're happy with that?
As far as I know, I believe we're still going to do some monitoring for hydrogen sulfide to see if there's any of that occurring, but so far, we have not got any complaints or comments, as far as I know.
Just wondering, because I haven't heard anything, so it's, that's good.
Right, absolutely. And we're planning a celebration of that project, probably in late July or maybe August. Sometime after the project's complete, we're going to have a celebration with the neighborhood for that project.
Rich, I talked to a resident, one who's on the block, that seemed to generate a lot of the problem, and seems to be very pleased. Good.
Oh, very good. Always happy to hear that.
Yes, pass along the thank yous.
All right, will do.
You, too.
All right. Yep. All right, the Train Depot is going to be relatively quick tonight. I did not make any updates to the list of schedule and costs and associated. We're still evaluating the costs, especially for the windows. We were able to get another cost for new window replacement. And we're also waiting until we get the existing windows removed from the building and evaluate the condition of those to see if we can get a cost as to what the restoration of those existing windows might be. But to date, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, CSX had agreed to extend the deadline, and we did receive the official letter from CSX the next day. The deadline for relocation is August 31st of this year now. With the foundations, they're on schedule to be complete by the end of June, and the CSX is contracting to remove the asbestos from the building. They actually began this past Monday in the afternoon, June 6th, and they, their original schedule is to be complete by Friday, June 17th. I plan to go down and talk to the workers and see what their, what their thoughts are after they have been in the building and saw what the condition is. And they've also agreed to remove the windows completely, along with their frames, and bag them so that we can take a look at them and possibly reuse them. But with this work going on, my next step is to get the demolition contract scheduled, the window and door bracing scheduled, and the relocation scheduled, and that's yet to be determined. One of the issues we're dealing with, with CSX and our contractors, is the insurance requirements that CSX requires. We're working through that. I know there's been multiple submittals by our contractors to get that approved. And that's the end of my presentation on the Train Depot. Are there any questions on that? For your information, I'll probably have, I expect to have more detailed schedules at the next meeting at the end of June.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you. Any questions? Great. We're going to add a special presentation. It's got to do with a group that's going to be at Spooky Nook, the middle of July, I think it is. You're going to see a lot of Model T vehicles around Hamilton. And I think BJ, you want to come up here? Bring your family if you want to. You would introduce yourself, and if you would, kind of say some of the events that you're going to be taking place with the Model Ts here in Hamilton, because there are quite a few events you have going on in the city.
Hi there. My name's BJ Miller, and we're with the Model T Ford Club International, which is a national, worldwide organization. And we have, this is the 65th Annual Tour. And about four years ago, we went up to Manheim and toured the Spooky Nook facility. And, sorry. And we decided, before the Hamilton project was even built, that we were going to have a big tour in Hamilton. So we're from the area, and we've always wanted to host a tour like this, but never had the ability to do that. We've had small tours in the past. In 2012, we did a small tour at Courtyard, and we had about 135 cars at that one. And I... And I, Sean from Butler County Bureau came over, and he wanted to have another Model T tour, and said, well, you don't have enough hotel. And he said, well, we're working on that. And here we are. So now it's only, we're down to a few weeks away. Planned all this during COVID, and been working, trying to work real hard on getting everything set up. So at the moment, we have about 235 Model Ts coming in. We've got people coming from Washington State, Colorado, Texas, Florida, some from Canada. They're coming in from all over, and they're towing a Model T behind their truck and their trailer, and we're going to be at Spooky Nook and Courtyard. We have 250 rooms currently reserved and between the two, and we're going to be running around the area every day. So we have lots of activities.
It's 250 per night, is that?
Yes, yeah. So everybody is actually coming in early. We told, we've been promoting Hamilton of all the new things going on and things to do. So our event actually starts on Sunday morning, and we have 45% of the group coming on Friday night, or Friday during the day. So the rest of the group mostly will come on Saturday. So they're here just because of all the promotions and the tour books we've done on the previous events to come and see Hamilton. So it's pretty neat to have Spooky Nook. We're one of their first events, large events coming in, so we're excited, everybody's excited to come in. So we have, everybody gets a banner, we'll be tying that on their, their car. So they'll get a car number here on the side.
I love your logo.
Oh, thank you.
That is so good.
That is cool.
We have a lady in our group that does design, so she came up with that.
That's very good.
So, and we, we got Butler County on there as well, at the bottom. We also have a license plate topper that we will be giving to each car, and they can drive it around on their Model T for many, many years. We have 535 people signed up, 56 kids that are 18 and younger. So with it being at Spooky Nook, we have promoted youth involvement as much as possible, so that's why we have, we have our kids here, and my wife and Sarah and Carolyn. So there's more of our group, but these are the ones we could get to come tonight. So-
Behind the scenes work.
So we did bring a couple items here. This picture over here that the girls are holding is a picture of the original Ford plant that was located on Ford Boulevard at the time, and now it's Joe Nuxall Boulevard. So Henry Ford came to Hamilton in 1918 and announced he was going to build a factory to build Ford's and Tractors. That didn't last very long. Worked on tractor project for a few months and switched over to wooden wheels. So, just like that. So we're bringing the Model T parts back into Hamilton that were actually made here. So, so as we're riding around, we're going to be going to surrounding counties in the Hamilton area, Butler County. We're going out to Indiana, and then every night, everybody comes back here, and they have supper, they go shopping, they do whatever they want. We have youth events and meetings and just all kinds of activities, and Spooky Nook was able to provide a lot of that answer for us, so we don't have to drive around in congestion in the evening. So we do try to avoid being in traffic, so we take the little backways out of town during popular times and try to stay out of everybody's way, because we do go a little slow, and there's a lot of us. So we have trailer parking at the freshman school, and now we have trailer parking at Spooky Nook as well, and Bridgeport Elementary. So with all the Model Ts, there's a truck and a trailer attached, so.
So it's not the circus coming?
So, and every day on our tour, we're going to be doing the Donut Trail. That was one of the highlights. Everybody is very excited about the Donut Trail that we tell about. But our Model Ts won't go to the places for the Donut Trail that are all the shops in the area, so they're actually coming to us every morning. So we have a coffee and donut stop. Sean has his team coming out, they're going stamps for everybody, and so we're supporting all the donut shops, getting a whole passport done that week. Municipal Brew Works has a special cake tapping of a pre-prohibition beer in our honor. So that sounded exciting, a lot of people like that. Hanover Winery, they have debuted a special label on tamarine wine, I believe. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, but they bottled it on Sunday, so it has a neat history of the Model T Club coming into Hamilton and a history of the Champion Paper Mill on the back. So you'll have to go get some of that. Our, we will have a car show, and it'll be at Jungle Gems on Sunday morning. Everybody's going to take a, get their picture taken in front of the monument, and that, that picture will be printed into the National Book, so they have, I have some extra copies down here if anybody would like any. But everybody's picture gets put in the book, and those are mailed worldwide. So for the whole event, Hamilton's going to be highlighted, all the, all our activities all week long, they're going to be well-recognized, so. If anybody wants to come over to the car show, it'll be Jungle Gems until about 2:00, and then everybody goes out riding around. So we like to drive more than we like to go on car shows, so. And we usually, so we'll have a donut stop every morning and an ice cream stop every afternoon, so that's kind of our requirement.
Wow.
So, but yeah, all week long, if anybody wants to hear all the details, I'll spare all that, but every day, we go out and just see the neat attractions that are local, about 100 miles every day, in a Model T, that's a long day. And we, we come back to Hamilton and enjoy the town, so.
Thank you. I mean, we've had a chance, Eric and I especially had a chance to talk with you. Your excitement about the event is absolutely contagious, and you left off a lot of names of the places that you're going to. I think you've got flubs involved, too.
Oh, yeah, we got flubs. We got Ice Cream Social Fashion Show at Spooky Nook. There's a, there's a lot going on.
It's really amazing, and I think I saw you in a Model T over the weekend. Were you driving around?
Oh, yeah, we spent the night at Spooky Nook. Yeah, we were running around.
I saw you folks making a left, left turn onto High Street, I'm going, I know who that is.
Yeah, yeah.
And you've been looking for places where you have your meetings, using our local restaurants. So thanks for having fun, spending the dollars, and putting us out there, Hamilton, Ohio, and Spooky Nook.
And thank you, guys. You guys have changed Hamilton a lot, and even just the last 20 years, as Hamilton has completely gone a whole different route, and it made an event like this possible, so we thank you guys, too.
Well, it's a great city team, and you're a great Model T team, I'll tell you what. We'll definitely see you around, and-
Yep.
Please, if you see one of us on council, tell us how you're doing.
Oh, yeah. Well, if you find us, hop in and go for a ride. You're all welcome.
Is this the weekend of the Antique Carp Parade as well?
We are the week before that, so we end on Friday night with our bank, closing banquet at Spooky Nook, and then the Carp Parade is Saturday morning.
Okay, so many of the cars will participate, perhaps?
So we have been promoting the Antique Carp Parade as well.
Wow.
So that, we are not affiliated with that, but we're promoting it, trying to get people to stay for an extra day and, and try to participate in that.
That's great, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm a member of Paulman.
All the stuff that's being special made, the Hanover Wine or anything like that, is it going to be available in Hamilton? They have to go to Hanover to get it, or?
I'm not real sure. They've done all this on their own.
Okay. I didn't know if they were going to be selling it, because you guys are going to have also-
Yeah, they're selling it.
I mean, they're going to be selling it here in Hamilton by chance, like at your event or anything like that?
They won't be selling it at our location, I know that. We're not allowed to have alcohol sales and stuff, because we're of our charter. But yeah, we're going as a stop to Hanover Winery.
Okay, out there, okay.
Out there, and then I believe they might have it in stores as well.
Okay, that, and-
I'm not for sure.
And the car, the other question was, the car's going to be parked at the Spooky Nook parking lot, so you still kind of have a show every day, right?
Yes, pretty much every evening. Yep, every evening, come in and visit.
You make me miss my Model A really bad, if you know that. I sold my Model A, and I know yours were Ts, but you've seen mine before, and it's, yeah, I miss it now.
Yep.
But that's all right. I get to see yours.
Yep. Yeah, you guys are all welcome to come out and see us. Anytime there's a congregation of Model Ts, it's all happy people, they're ready to go for a ride, so.
And I must say also, you have to go to Shandon, Ohio, and see the Salty Dog Museum out there. Everybody doesn't even know it's there. And there's the antique fire trucks there, the Model, Model As and Model Ts, and, you know, you guys build engines, they don't know this, build engines all over this country and the world, too.
Yeah, we build antique engines.
Model As and Model Ts, because mine had a Ron's machine shop engine in it, so you guys are well-known all over, so.
Yep, we specialize in antique-
Nice little place out in Shandon, you need a stop, it's beautiful cars out there. So it's called the Salty Dog, and it's a great place to stop out.
Yeah, we have Strawberry Festival this Saturday, Strawberry Festival, from 10 to 5. We'll be doing antique fire truck rides, there's vendors, crafts, antiques, strawberry shortcake, it's all made, homemade food by the church, and Boy Scouts, yeah, homemade lemonade, and bake sale, lots of activities. So if you have time, come on out Friday, or Saturday.
Will do. And thanks for bringing smiles to City Council tonight, because a lot of people are smiling out there and are thinking about this event, what they're going to be seeing.
Thanks, BJ.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Next, we-
Here's you guys some books, if you want.
Great, hey, thanks. Sorry, you guys passed them around there. No ads. Thank you. Next, we have audience of citizens, individuals who wish to make comments may make them during this part of the agenda, or may reserve the right to speak specifically when that item is up for vote on council floor. Individuals who attend to address City Council require to sign the blue public speaking book that I have right here, and I believe three people have signed. Each speaker's allowed up to five minutes, and so we do have a second reading and a vote tonight involving the proposed parking expansion, potential stadium and business plan development for BAY. And so, we'll go right to the book, and all three speakers are here on the BAY part of the agenda. Any of you want to speak, when it's just prior to the vote, or do people want to speak now? I mean, I'll just call the name out. Ken Reeves, you're first. Yeah, I guess we should have another two guys leave.
We should step out?
Yes, right now, may as well. Well, yeah, we'll keep it, we'll keep it consistent. If they just come back in, they're going to go back out. Mr. Reeves, give us your name and your address, please.
Ken Reeves, 920 Columbia Road. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank those in the room that spent time with me out of your busy schedule in the last week. You know who you are. I feel like you took time to listen to me and understand my position, and I thank you for that. I understand tonight, we're going to vote on whether we're going to continue this process or not. My position is, is that I am against the current proposal that, or the latest proposal that's on the table. However, I feel that both sides are working hard to get a resolution that's going to work for everybody. So with that, I, I support continuing this process to try and get that happy place so that it works out for everybody. And we get a stadium that BAY is long overdue to have, so hopefully this all works out for everybody, and I do support continuing the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Pendergast.
Brian Pendergast, 16 Meadowwood Way, Hamilton, Ohio, the principal at BAY. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Over the last couple of weeks, we've met with the adjacent property owners to discuss their concerns and see what changes could possibly be made. We've agreed to look at other orientations for the stadium in an effort to address the concerns of the neighbors to the south. Ed O'Reed has spent considerable time last Thursday and this past Monday, meeting with the neighbors also, and I appreciate her doing that. There was a concern about the number of games that would be happening in our proposal. We asked for seven, opportunities for seven nights a week. We met with the neighbors and talked about why that is, because of scheduling, we don't know what night games are going to be on. Soccer could be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Football is a bit, if it's a home game, would be on Friday. We asked for Saturday more for the situation, we have a lightning delay or a major storm on Friday, we need to play on Saturday, we have that. But at no point will we play seven nights a week. Quite honestly, we probably won't even play five nights a week. The most I could see us ever doing is four at a max, but probably it's going to be three nights a week that we would be using the stadium, which, with a total of about less than 30 games for the year in the fall, and then maybe one track meet, but quite honestly, it's hard to schedule those, you know, moving forward, and a lot of times, those are on the weekends. Of the 30 games, you know, we're really talking about two or three games that could possibly be sold out if we play Ross or Edgewood at home. Yes, the stadium will probably sell out, because they're local rivals. Unfortunately, we travel really well to away games. Other teams in our league do not travel very well. We're lucky if we can get 100 people from the other team to come to games, no matter where we're playing. So we're really only talking two, maybe three maximum, that we would have a sold-out football game. Lights and PAs will only be used for games. We will not be practicing late at night just to turn the lights on. They cost too much, as you guys were well aware, if we're utility cost. We will not be doing that. As we told the neighbors, the only time we would turn on lights for a practice situation is if our football team or our soccer teams are fortunate enough to make a really long run, and it gets dark early, and they need to practice till 5:30 or 6:00, we might turn them on for that hour, and then turn them right back off. We've already addressed this with City Council and with the neighbors, but the parking lot part of the project, we eliminated the exit onto Jarden Lane completely, that will be closed off. All exits and entrances will come off of New London. When we have a large event, having an event that brings a large crowd, we've committed to having, hiring police officers to be on the corner of Westridge and Hogan, and then also Jarden and New London, if need be at that point, to stop anyone from parking or trying to cut through those two lanes from that, and making sure they're not going there. We're also going to be reaching out to the city to see about the possibility of using the upper parking lot of Potters for those types of events when we have a really large crowd from there. It's been suggested that we, at the last meeting, that we maybe move our school and build a new school somewhere else. That's obviously not feasible for, for us. It's too, way too costly, and quite honestly, we don't want to move from Hamilton or from New London from, from that standpoint. When you look at the other schools and the high schools in the greater Cincinnati, both Catholic and in public, we are one of, right now, we're one of two, but Purcell Marion's building there, schools that do not have their own stadium on campus. Of those, you could argue that Fairfield and Lakota West are not in residential areas, but all other stadiums are smack dab in the middle of a residential area. So we're really only asking for something that all of our other schools have, that we're competing with for, for students. And we've provided the staff, your staff, with that list of all those schools from that standpoint. It was also brought up the last meeting, that I guess people said they've heard our music, our band practicing after school. We haven't had a marching band in 14 years, so the only time you would ever hear our band is on freshman orientation day, when they're out on the front porch, playing from 7:30, 7:45, 7:50 till about 8:30, one day a week the entire year. Otherwise, they are in our music room, totally enclosed, they're not playing after school out there. Now, if we were fortunate enough to have a stadium, sure, they would probably play at that event, but they do not practice outside of our building in any way, shape, or form. As you know, this is a first step in a multi-step process. We know we're going to be hopefully in front of you many times coming forward throughout this process if it's approved tonight, but tonight, we ask and request that you approve of the preliminary PUD, so we can continue to proceed with the planning, fundraising, and more details that need to come for this. Thank you.
Thank you. David Lappas?
Mayor, before Mr. Lappas's testimony, he provided a document to all of City Council. Is your decision if you want to accept this into the record?
Your motion that we accept Mr. Lappas's written testimony, it's the title of the written testimony for Hamilton City Council meeting for 8 June 2022.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Nav, statement of Councilmember Vaughn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, we've accepted this into our meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Given the five-minute time limit, I'll just go through some highlights of what I have, and hopefully you can ask any questions on the details as you may. I live at 18 Hamilton, or 18 Meadowwood Way. I live at eighteen Hamilton, or eighteen Meadowwood Way. The property is roughly a little over seven hundred feet from Baiden High School, lot to lot, just to give you an idea of distances. When I look at the map of the Baiden High School location relative to all, all the surrounding residential area, there's not a comparable school in this kind of situation, they may be adjacent to streets on one side or the other, but they're not surrounded by clearly residential zone. Just a couple rebuttal points from the previous meeting, I won't get into all the details here, but there are a variety of conditions of the current Baiden field that was suggested as a detriment in terms of using that for school activities, some of which were rocks in the field, holes in the ground, and so forth, they didn't seem to understand how to get grass to grow in a certain location, they had trouble dealing with that. That also suggests to me that there's a groundkeeping issue, not just, you know, something that is a safety concern to the students, but just general maintenance. Now, one of the proposals is with the stadium to go with artificial turf. Now, artificial turf in and of itself won't prevent holes from being generated if it's animal activity or whatever, but granted that there may be conditions of concern, which are currently, are certainly valid, there should be some further explanation of what is actually going on with the field that causes them to feel that they need to change. In terms of student safety with artificial turf, there are a lot of different brands and styles and chemical makeup, so it's hard to predict what they're going to put in and therefore what, if any issues there might be with those, but generally, in the past, there have been a couple areas of concern with artificial turf, in terms of leaching chemicals into the ground for the current existing property and the surrounding property, there's a big issue of heat islands, as they call them, which create the situation where the temperature on the field can be thirty, fifty degrees hotter than the surrounding area. In some localities, they've even gone to the point of putting in protocols to make sure that the fields don't cause heat issues for the athletes. In terms of the acoustics, which I mentioned the last time, since I'm an acoustic engineer by trade, the concern there is basically with the open stadium that's not enclosed, the sound system is they propose that with the equipment that they've listed, and according to the manufacturer themselves, cause damage to human hearing, so I would suggest that there needs to be some kind of protocol or evaluation further than what's been done to date, in terms of some kind of limit on what upper decibel level can be used, because once you lose your hearing or damage it in any way, it's lost, you can't get it back. Just, just a couple of general comments. According to Baiden's notes in the council agenda, page two nineteen of six eight twenty-two, the way it reads to me is that they're looking at the future stadium as something that might not be financially easily acquired, therefore, there may be a push to use that facility for generating revenue above and beyond just the initial scope of the cost. That's the concern for at least me, being a local neighbor, that they're saying today that they won't use it seven days a week, but there's nothing to prevent them from contracting it out to whoever they want, third parties, for music events or political events or anything else, not just school events, that's the underlying concern there. I understand that New London is being widened, which is a good thing, I would point out that it is costing the city ninety thousand dollars, it's their contribution to the, to the project, so there is an underlying cost, among other things. Since I live at Meadowwood Way, although the property does abut Columbia at the bottom of the lot, I no longer travel on Hogan just because of this repair, and it's been like that for several years, so with increased traffic, there would be a concern that that's just going to get worse.
Okay, I think your time's about up, I think you're down to probably your last bullet point, is that correct?
Right, the last page. There was a comment by staff in their report that property values are going to go up to average property values, wasn't any basis for that, there wasn't any analysis provided, I'm thinking that just by putting money into Baiden, obviously, the average in the local area is going to go up, but I think that's a highly misleading measurement, they should be using median values for the property to see what kind of impact there might be. And lastly, I would point out that the noise and the lighting from the stadium is really the primary concern, that even driving along Columbia, you can see the flagpole of Baiden now, so you're going to be able to see the light poles that are going to be eighty to ninety feet high, that's a given, so even with them pointing those down towards the field, which they're proposing to try to concentrate the effect on the surrounding area, that may inadvertently just shine more light into Columbia, so if nothing else, it would be a distraction for local traffic. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's the only three people that I have on, in the book.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, probably a, a good time for me to be able to share, I had to be away two weeks ago for our council meeting, I was away for a funeral, but I did stream the entire meeting, all of the testimony, all of the, the weighted conversations that took place that night, as well as visiting the properties, the streets, and, and areas that are, are in the Baiden proposal, the, the affected neighborhoods around it, both, both surrounding Baiden and the proposal, as well as across the street on New London Road, so I just wanted to be able to share that with everyone here in audience tonight, as well as those watching on TV, Hamilton and most of council, thank you.
So that is for the record, the fact that you were able to hear the entire public hearing?
Exactly.
Great. Okay, that takes care of audience of citizens, we now go to the consent agenda, that includes matters such as all staff reports, meeting minutes.
Bring them back.
Yeah, I got them written down, too, I don't know why I didn't say, yeah, bring them back in.
Sure.
Just bring more of them.
Yeah, flip a coin back there. I think I said.
We're back.
Pullman and Lauer.
He's probably watching.
I played some pitch back there, so.
I don't know how to play pitch, I'm normally dying in Hamilton, Ohio, doesn't know how to play pitch. Sorry.
Okay, now we go to the consent agenda, all staff reports, meeting minutes, caucus reports, and will be convened the whole this evening?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, convening the whole is a chance for council to ask questions and comment on reports, so we have to suspend the rules, I'll accept the motion regarding, will convene the hall?
So moved.
Second, the motion made the committee, excuse me, the motion made the regular meeting be recessed, convene the whole take place, that was a motion made by council member Fear, I believe, and, and seconded by vice mayor Ryan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried, it is seven oh one. Mr. City Clerk, I guess you're going to direct us and lead us into the caucus agenda.
That's correct, sir, so for our first item this evening, this is for caucus agenda item number one, this, this will be a presentation by Mr. Scott Scrimese, related to the purchase of vehicles for the Hamilton Police Department.
Good evening, mayor, member, members of council, this is pretty straightforward, it's regards to vehicles in our investigation section, they're going to be taken out of service, they're fifteen plus years old, one was an old patrol vehicle that was converted for a detective, a detective car, and the other one is a hand-me-down from another city department, but with the supply chain issues, we can't get state bids on any type of vehicle, so as you can see in the report, we have two Trailblazers that are at a local dealership, they're available immediately, the cost is what we normally pay for a basic police SUV, so tonight, we're asking council to waive the advertising for the bids due to supply chain, supply chain shortage.
Any questions on that one? We go to caucus agenda, item number, that, number two, the next one, who's taking care of that?
That'll be Liz Hayden of the Planning Department.
Good evening, council members and residents of Hamilton, I'm Liz Hayden with the Planning Department, and we have one item on the caucus agenda tonight, and it's for rezoning the Prospect Hill neighborhood to the traditional neighborhood zoning district, so it is quite a big item, it affects, I believe, thirteen hundred and eighty parcels. The traditional neighborhood zoning districts were, we adopted into our zoning ordinance back in twenty nineteen, it was developed specifically for Hamilton's traditional and urban core neighborhoods, and it, in this zoning district, there's flexible design regulations that take into account the character of the surrounding area, there are infill development standards, and it is primarily a single-family zoning district, it's right, and with regulations to prevent the conversion of structures intended for single-family dwellings into multifamily dwellings. We were proposed, the rezoning of Prospect Hill to the traditional zoning, neighborhood zoning districts was proposed, it was going to be on the Planning Commission agenda in March twenty twenty, and as you can imagine, that time, it was not a good time to rezone thirteen hundred and eighty parcels of people's property because of the COVID issues, and we are finally at a place where we felt it was appropriate to resume this project, this rezoning proposal, that is in, is a major part of the city's comprehensive plan, what we have done, though, is split it up, at that time, we were doing Prospect Hill and Lindenwald, this time, we've split it up so that Prospect Hill is one meeting, and then you'll see, in a month, we'll come back and do Lindenwald, and take it in smaller bites to, so that we're having a little bit smaller public hearings. So this is a map that shows you where the, the, in red, highlighted red, is where the rezoning is proposed, and as you can see on this, there's three different kinds of zoning currently, but you'll see that what we're proposing to rezone is R three and R four, which are multifamily zoning districts, but in practice, this area is pretty much primarily single-family with a few duplexes and triplexes, so it just, the zoning, the multifamily zoning does not reflect what's on the ground right now, so what we're proposing is traditional neighborhood zoning, there's four different zonings, TN one, two, three, and four, but they're all foundationally, single-family zoning with the ability to do different kinds of things as conditional uses, so what you see that isn't zone TN one is, there's a few parcels in this area that are zone TN two, three, or four, and it basically reflects what's on the ground, if it's a duplex or triplex, or a, a church or a school, or there are, there are pockets of commercial in these areas as well, so that's what the zoning takes into account, it just takes into account the character of our historic traditional neighborhoods. When we went through Planning Commission, we, we had about four or five people reach out, ask questions, there was one person that requested to change the zoning district, Planning Commission agreed and, and agreed with that person, other than that, there were no objections. Do you have any questions about this proposal?
Nope. Thank you. Are you a liquor permit guy?
Somewhere around here.
Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Daniel Tiedemann, city clerk, I'll be brief with my presentation this evening, so for item number three, this is a C one, like new liquor permit for Gill Ohio Incorporated at one fifty Fair Avenue, so with it being on the caucus agenda like this, the State of Ohio Division of Liquor Control, they give a note, a notice to the city, or at least an opportunity to object to any new liquor permits in this situation, in this situation, staff reviewed it, and there's no major objections that would require us to request a hearing to determine if this permit should be issued, so staff is requesting that you concur with our recommendations and not object to this permit, do we have any questions for this item?
Okay, change hats again.
Then lastly, for items number four and five, Mr. Tom Vanderhorst will be presenting those items.
Evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members of the community, I'm Tom Vanderhorst, the executive director of external services, I'm here to present two items to you, one of them is a class, reclassification of an existing position, it's a senior registered environmental health specialist, I think most of us currently know these hardworking folks as sanitarians, the state is asking us to change the name to registered environmental health specialist, so this is a position, it's a reclassification for Jonika Creach, she's currently serving in this capacity now, she's supervising the other sanitarians, and this is something that would reclassify her, we do not expect this to have much in the way of fiscal impact, because she's already doing this work, she, with the overtime and everything, she worked last year, she was right in the middle of this pay range already, so this is not a new position. Any questions? And on the next item on the agenda, I'm going to be pinching for Dave Jones, he's at the GFOA conference in Austin tonight, it is sort of a follow-up on the presentation I gave last time, it's for a three million dollar grant to the CIC, and if you remember, the CIC has already voted to encumber this money for an incentive for the Anthony Wayne Hotel.
Any questions about that one? I believe we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom.
I'll accept the motion, the committee the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Nab, second by council member Fear, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried, we're at seven ten, I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Pullman, seconded by vice mayor Ryan, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay, I'll accept the motion regarding consent agenda. Mr. Mayor. Council member Pullman.
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receives the reports of consent agenda and concur in the recommendations.
Second.
Motion by council member Pullman, seconded by council member Vaughn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried, we now go to the public hearing section, and I'll accept the motion, the regular meeting be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Ryan, seconded by council member Fear, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried, it is seven eleven, we now go into the public hearing.
A public hearing regarding amending part seventeen of health, of the health code of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, by establishing chapter seventeen eighty-three cigarette and tobacco vendors' sales to persons under twenty-one in regards to licensing for and sales of tobacco products.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving that purpose read into the record, involving the licensing, anybody in the audience wish to be heard? I think for the record, we did receive, I think today, some written letters of support for this retail licensing, recognized, I think, two or three who spoke at the last council meeting, who are here, so there is to be no one else who wishes to speak, I'll double check. I'll double check, but I don't think anybody signed it, and nobody signed it. If any council wish to speak or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Hearing none, that motion is carried. Public hearing is closed at 7:12. And I accept the meeting, accept a motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
We now go into that section, council actions pertaining to legislative items. Now I'll accept the motion regarding that part of the agenda we're going into right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to being considered at this meeting.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go into pending legislation, agenda item number seven, second reading ordinance involving cigarette and tobacco vendors.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by establishing new Chapter 1783 cigarette and tobacco vendors' sales to persons under 21 tobacco retailer license in regards to licensing for and sales of tobacco products, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any comments or discussion on this? Want to thank everybody who was involved in this. I see envisioned partnerships here, and I know our various departments in the city have worked on this as well. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number eight, second reading ordinance, again, also pertaining to tobacco, nicotine, vaping sales.
An ordinance amending and supplementing sections of the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, Sections 1250, land use chart, 1,300 conditional uses, and 3,900 glossary pertaining to tobacco, nicotine, and vaping sales, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Discussion on this one, comments? Again, thank you for all involved. Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Okay, I think it's time for two more folks to leave and come back shortly. We now get to agenda item number nine. I feel like a bad child. Second reading of an ordinance involving the Baden High School proposed parking expansion, potential stadium, potential stadium, and business plan development.
An ordinance approving the preliminary plan development for the Stephen T. Baden High School for proposed parking expansion, potential stadium, athletic complex, and amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of 571 New London Road, parcel number P6412159000056, 950 Jordan Lane, parcel numbers P6412156000006, and P4, excuse me, P64121560007, and 960 Jordan Lane, parcel numbers P641215600005, from R1 single-family residence to BPD business plan development. Etta Reed, professional engineer for Stephen T. Baden High School applicant, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion or comments on this? I just want to say briefly that everyone seemed to listen to each other in this whole process, and this is a process. There will be a traffic analysis. There's going to be additional analysis of light, sound, looking at drawings again. But the landscape is going to be maintained and replaced. It's, I think everybody just listened. So I thank everybody who commented at the various public hearings, going back to Planning Commission and the like. Any other comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Just want to thank all the neighbors who are really concerned about this. I appreciate all of your thoughts, all of your concerns. And I can relate to those concerns because I grew up on Taff Place, at the corner of Brookwood and Taff. So I know what it's like having those lights shining in your house at night, and I know what it's like having, having the traffic. So I just want to say thank you, but I also want to thank Baden for reaching out to these folks, working with them, talking with them, adhering to their complaints and their, their thoughts and their concerns. Thank you for also being a good neighbor, and I hope that you will continue to be a good neighbor to them. And when they call that you pick up, if they want to meet, that you'll, that you will meet. So, so thank you. That, that is living the Baden, you know, principle. Thank you for serving them. I hope we will continue to work through these issues and looking forward to the development. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I too commend all the neighbors in Baden working together through this process. We heard one of the gentleman speakers tonight talk to the process and the fact that the, the people that have a vested interest in this project are, are talking together and looking for solutions, looking for solutions on traffic and lighting and moving people and, and sound and things like that. I, I commend all of you for getting together and continuing through what will be a, a process. It's not here tonight. It's not a done deal. There are a lot of options that have been explored. I'm sure there will be, continue to be a lot of options further explored. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I echo a lot of what Mike Lontembo said. I especially want to, I feel for people in their neighborhood. I can understand not wanting this in your backyard. I, people should not dread pulling in and out of their driveway. But in this instance, this is a necessity for Baden High School, and I just support everything they've done, and I appreciate how they've tried to communicate with the neighbors also. So thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
And I will just add that I live in the neighborhood within sight of Baden High School, and I appreciate all the folks who have reached out to me, who have offered a lot of excellent explanations of concerns or desires for this. So I truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Fish, I gotta ask, they abstained on the record already at some point in time. Have they or have they not?
At the last meeting, you made a note out on the record as they were leaving that they needed to abstain. So you can make that note again. Since we're finished with our discussion, we can also, you know, invite them back to get their, you know, say their abstention for the vote.
I think we'll definitely do that so they can abstain when they get back into something they had to abstain for the reasons known.
Right.
Okay. If there's no other comment, discussion, we can do the roll call vote then.
You can get him.
Oh, they'll come back, then we'll do the motion for the roll call. I'm sorry, we, I'm sorry.
We've already done the motion, yeah.
So they can come back, then we'll do the roll call, and then.
If that makes it easier.
So they can abstain.
Yeah, they have to abstain on the record. Again, I think it's better for the record that we do it that way.
Yes, sir.
I do. I heard. He's locked. That's what you get. For the record, Councilmember Lauer and Councilmember Pullman have rejoined us here, and we're going to do the roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Abstained.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Abstained.
Okay, the ordinance is adopted 4 to 0 with two abstentions.
Okay. We now go to agenda item number 10, second reading of an ordinance involving 2275 Pleasant Avenue, the Raymer Building, and Core Fund.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to the Consortium for Ongoing Reinvestment Efforts, CORE, 2275 Pleasant Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, 45015, second reading.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Ryan. I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. We go to new legislation, agenda item number 11, first reading of an ordinance involving some pay ranges.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the Codified Ordnances of the City of, excuse me, Schedule A of the Codified Ordnances of the City's Classification and Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2021-12-121, adopted December 8, 2022, to reassign the pay ranges for the Water Production Superintendent, Waste Water Treatment Superintendent, and Assistant Water Production Superintendent, first reading.
What's going on? That's number?
11.
So we've got 10? Do we, I'm looking at something else, do we? We had the motion, y'all, for 10, and we already did, we already did 10, so we're on 11 now. Okay, so it's first reading of an ordinance involving the pay ranges. We now go to agenda item number 12, first reading of an ordinance, again, involving the Core Fund.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Consortium for Ongoing Reinvestment Efforts CORE in the amount of $600,000, first reading.
Thank you. We now go to agenda item number 13, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving 10 South Monument Avenue.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a development agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 10 South Monument Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. Vision AWH LLC, City of Hamilton, first reading.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 14, which is a first reading of an emergency ordinance involving the lease purchase of a vacuum truck.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the lease purchase financing of a vacuum truck, execution of a master tax exempt lease, purchase agreement, and related agreements, certificates, and instruments, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 15, first reading of an ordinance involving vacating an alley.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Ridaway, Edwards Avenue Alley, located between Coralie Street and the railroad, situated in the First Ward, South Side, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 16, which is a resolution involving CRA and Great Miami Brewing.
A resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a community reinvestment area agreement with Great Miami Brewing Real Estate Holdings LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any comments or questions about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We now go to number 17 on the agenda. It's a resolution involving a side lot.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 221 North 8th Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions or comments on this one? Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We now go to agenda item number 18, which is a resolution involving a liquor permit.
A resolution objecting to the request to the application for the transfer of D1, D2, D3A, and D6 liquor permits to Rocky Fields LLC, doing business as Dayton Lane Pub, 1103 Dayton Street, first floor, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, from P-Dubs Entertainment LLC, doing business as Dayton Lane Pub, located at 1103 Dayton Street, first floor, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 19, which is a resolution involving U.S. Treasury Regulations and some bond proceeds.
A resolution declaring official intent under U.S. Treasury Regulations with respect to reimbursement from bond proceeds of temporary advances made for payments prior to issuance and related matters.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice, excuse me, Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 20, which is a resolution involving a grant application for the London Road West Fairway Drive intersection.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with Ohio, the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, safety program for improvements to the New London West Fairway Drive intersection.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Pullman. Rich still here? That's going to be like a center lane project.
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for.
We will need to coordinate with the new campus plan of Baden High School as well, so that's all we've got to get.
And a sidewalk improvement type of, this part of the program too? Great. Any other questions at all? Hearing none, roll call vote.[1598.83]
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We now go to Agenda Item Number 21, which is a resolution allowing the city manager to, I guess we're seeking a grant for lead service line inventory and mapping program.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, OEP, H2O funding program grant agreement and to accept the total award amount of $50,000 for the lead service line inventory and mapping program.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab. Second by councilmember Fear. I guess we secured this grant, and I think Alicia Peter was involved in this. Obviously, anything involving, I mean, lead inventory and mapping is very important. So again, we're getting grants that we deserve, and I thank all the folks who worked on this. All right, any other questions or comments? Roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay, I think we're ready for the audio. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to acknowledge Drew Guthridge is with us tonight. I'm not sure if everyone has met Drew yet, but he succeeded Fabian Schmall as the president and CEO of Bilstein. So I just wanted to publicly congratulate Drew for the promotion and thank him and Bilstein for being incredible corporate citizens in Hamilton, Ohio. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Audience, city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I was, I've been working down in 2nd Ward or our Riverview neighborhood. I was driving by, driving through One Down Lane Avenue. I believe we have someone that works in the neighborhoods or used to work in our neighborhood department, Rosemary Jones. I don't know if anybody's familiar with her. It's 85 degrees out, she's older, and she is out there with a broom at the street curb sweeping her curb in front of her house. And I just thought that, I pulled over, I stopped, I spoke with her, and I just thought that that was something neat. Someone who cared enough about her personal space to be out taking responsibility, just being a great citizen and cleaning, cleaning what she took as her responsibility. And I had a great conversation with her. She's a neat lady. I tried to get her to come up here, but she was not interested in that. But it was a great conversation, and what a wonderful, responsible citizen that she is, and she's a model for what all of us should be, so...
Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I just wanted to say it was a great start to the summer, I think, with the Pride celebration. I participated in the march last Saturday. It was amazing to see all the folks going across and back over the bridge throughout the day, all of the activity. I don't know how many people, but I would say thousands were there, and then into the evening. And the coming weekends are just packed in Hamilton. I've had several people say, will you be attending these events? And so I've asked if we can just play a real quick little sample of what's to come for just this weekend at Hamilton, at the parks, and so forth. So, Daniel, if you could just hit play?
... Absolutely. ... Let's see. Things get started off... I don't know what happened there. Let me try that one more time, please. ... That is something for everyone. Things get started off Thursday night with another exceptional concert at River's Edge with the Flying Buffalos taking to the stage. Two events kick off Friday night and run throughout the weekend. Municipal Brew Works celebrates their anniversary with live music and a special anniversary beer. And Art Space will feature a new exhibit from regional television host Rodney Veale titled Throwaway Beauty. Saturday is, boys, for an amazing day to get out and about throughout the city. The popular and eclectic Hamilton Flea returns from 10 to 4 at Markham Park. And then there is the Electricity Mural Event, taking place all around Hamilton on both Saturday and Sunday. Come watch murals being painted throughout the city, check out live DJs, and jump in and leave your own mark by helping out on a mural. And if for those looking for something a little more active, Saturday morning features a pair of events that require a little exertion. You can sign up for the Family Promise 5K or hop on your bike and ride in a Vision Partnership 17 Hoods Bike Tour, featuring many of the city parks. So it's a great weekend to come, stay and play, and explore Hamilton.
I'll be at the concert tomorrow night, helping to serve beer, and then on the bike tour on Saturday, so I hope a lot of people will be out and engaged with the community. All these events are free, so there's no excuse not to have something to do over the weekend.
Great. Thank you for bringing that to all of our attention. Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Last week, Mayor and myself, we got to go down to Joe Nuxhall Miracle League Field to congratulate and give a certificate of recognition to a young man, Adam Gibbemeyer, that's going, that he's there right now at the USA Games for Special Olympics. That's what this button is right here. This is actually an official button for the USA Games. There's over 6,000 athletes there. Actually, my wife is down there as a nurse for the Games, taking care of a lot of people. And Adam got to show Mayor how to play bocce, and he went down for bocce. So, the mayor did, he was, had a quick lesson, played Adam, and he actually beat Adam. But I told Adam, I said, I really appreciate you letting the mayor win, because he pouts